I'd like to call for order the Berlin School Committee meeting, May 9. And first thing I'd like to do is to ask the committee if we could take the presentation of the Energy Saving Plan by Jay Booman to the top of the agenda, out of order.
I don't think so.
So do I hear a motion to do that?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mrs. Booman.
Good evening. As you know, we are trying to get our green communities designation. And we have two criteria that we need the school committee to approve. The first criteria is the energy efficiency policy, or energy reduction policy. And I believe you all have a copy of that.
Yes, we do.
You most likely do.
So it's the Energy Reduction Action Plan outline. And basically what it does is it gives an outline. We have, once we become a green community, we have five years to reduce our energy usage for the town by 20 percent. And this plan basically kind of says how we intend to do that. We've had an energy audit by a company called B2Q, which was a state-sponsored energy audit at Berlin Memorial. We had a second energy audit at Berlin Memorial by Reliance, no Guardian, I'm sorry, Guardian Energy Management. And we have also had SES, Sustainable Engineering, which was part of the ARRAEEDG grant. And they're the people who did a, they're the people who did a very in-depth study of the heating system. And also did some energy efficiency studies and said that you were at the 40th percentile in energy efficiency for schools in this, they compared it to a bunch of similar schools, the region, and the size of the school. So I'd just like to show you all a little chart. We use something now called Mass Energy Insight, which is a program that the state sponsors. And we put, the electrical usage gets put in automatically, we put in the oil and gas. And this is Buildings to Target diagram. And you will see that the buildings that you want to target are in the upper right quadrant. And Berlin Memorial School stands out along with this municipal building also. So what I would like to ask you to do tonight is to approve this Energy Reduction Action Plan outline and approve it and give me a letter that says that you approved it. So what it does is, as I said before, it's a plan that kind of outlines how we'd reduce energy. If we become a green community, designated green community, the minimal grant that we are eligible for is $130,000. And I think that Berlin Memorial is probably one of the first buildings in the town that we would like to focus on.
Now tell us what that would entail as far as the accepting the plan. What are we obligated?
You're not obligated really to do anything. All you're saying is that you will, I don't know, maybe cooperate with the town to reduce the energy in the school. As we apply for a green community, we're saying that as a town, we are going to try to reduce our energy usage by 20 percent. And the Green Community Committee, I mean, the Energy Committee would probably target Berlin Memorial first, because you are such energy hogs.
That's hard to believe.
Pardon me?
That's hard to believe, isn't it?
Spoken like a true board of selectmen.
Well, really, it's the HVAC system. If you look at all these reports, there are so many pieces of it, as Courtney knows, that don't work, that, you know, things are stuck open, or there's thermostats that say it's 30 degrees out when it's really 50 degrees. So.
Are there any ramifications if we don't get to the 20 percent within five years?
I asked that question too. No, because they said that what they're going to do is, you know, every year you have to file a report and say how far you've gotten. And if you haven't gotten significantly, significantly towards that goal, then they would, would call you and talk to you and say, you know.
Can we help you get going?
Yeah.
Adequate yearly progress?
And so this would allow us though to get grants from the state to assist with a lot of the repairs, upgrades, things like that, if we got the Green Communities Act. Is that correct?
Yes. And we're also eligible for National Grid incentives, which was something I was going to talk to Courtney about, because I think the boiler may or may, may have, may have an incentive attached to it. We need to talk to the National Grid representative. There's a lot of money floating around out there, and it would be nice if we could grab a little of it, free money. Well, there's paperwork attached, but.
Right.
But it's mostly free. So, I mean, I think, well, one of the things that we saw when we put all these numbers in was that your electrical usage, I think I said this in the email, since we redid the lights, your electrical usage went down 5 percent since that point. But your oil usage has steadily been increasing, and that's even when they normalize the data for the weather. So, I don't know.
Well, I think that through the chair, I think the timing of it is excellent, because, I mean, we're going out for a roof survey, you know, this, this spring, summer, so to speak, and we didn't get that together. And it obviously would come up with that roof survey. So I think that is excellent timing, which I think would support the town's initiative toward this, because you could, even though it's already in the budget, you could say, hey, we've already started to make progress in terms of studying our roof and the issues that we have with it. And I read through the report, a lot of these issues in the Energy Efficiency Project Report that gave us a lot of them, a roof, a roof related.
Roof issues, yes.
A lot of roof-related issues, flashing, and all kinds of issues that are in there. So, I mean, the timing of it might be, might be really good. And then particularly if you're, next year, depending what we find out about the roof, that might be a good opportunity for the town, you know, to pursue that with, with the state or the federal government. I'm not sure what the funding source here is.
State funding, yeah.
State funding.
Yeah.
At that point in time. So it might, it might be just, you know, really good timing to get, to get a lot of that done.
Yeah. Yeah.
I saw some of the other things we already have in state statute anyhow, like the idling of the buses and things of that.
We'll get to that one.
Oh, okay.
This is just criteria in three, which is that I need the school committee to accept the energy reduction plan. But actually, it has to be signed by.
Whatever they vote.
The Board of Selectmen voted that they hereby adopted the Town of Berlin Energy Reduction Plan for Criteria Three of the Green Communities Application as presented by the Berlin Energy Committee, which is for tonight's meeting.
As long as the capacity to, to do the work is, is not dependent, as is through the chair, upon the school committee to come up with that, they're operating budget.
No, nope. This would all be grant money from the state.
Was there another question that you had?
That was, that was just my, yeah, the capacity.
Okay.
To do that. I mean, you know, financially as well as in terms of personnel.
Right.
To implement the plan, because, you know, we don't have a facilities manager, so we kind of do this through the business office and superintendent and our part-time head custodian that we share with, with Boylston, going back and forth. So as I meant by capacity, it means only so much capacity to, to get, to get the stuff.
Right, right.
Well, we actually can use 10 percent of the grant for administration, so you could actually hire someone to, to do some of the paperwork and other stuff.
Okay. Any questions?
I just think this is the way a lot of towns are trending, especially with school systems. And I think we should promote this, and we could make it educational and have an education piece along with it, if that's what Carol would like to do with a lot of the work that we're doing. So I would support this.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So is there a particular motion that needs to be made?
I think you just need to make a motion that, that you will adopt the Town of Berlin Energy Reduction Plan for Criteria Three of the Green Communities Application Designation. Can I do that? Thank you.
Do I hear that motion?
So moved. Now, did we want to add anything, as long as it doesn't?
Well, I mean, if you wanted, just to cover the bases, if you wanted to add, you know, subject to, you know, personnel capacity that, that we have and funding resources to implement the plan.
Would that, would that?
We're not going to force anything on you. If you can't do it, you can't do it. We can certainly work on this building, which has its own issues.
Okay. Because that may not work as far as getting us as a green community.
Well, we have five years.
Well, no, I mean, to be designated as a green community, if we put that stipulation in the motion, is that going to?
I don't know. I, I would just rather have the wording that they gave us that we need to have.
Okay.
You could make the motion, and then you could send a separate letter if you wanted to, if you felt more comfortable to the Board of Selectmen, just saying, no, obviously we're all on board with our list, but please understand, you know, just, we want to feel comfortable with such to our capacity to handle what's coming down the line in the next, next five days.
So the letter would go to the Selectmen?
Chairman, well, I said to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, yeah.
Okay.
Well, this letter needs to be addressed to the Green Communities.
Right.
Right.
Right, I mean, there was another separate letter.
Okay. So you're comfortable with the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a second.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Now, the other criteria that involves this is that we have to have a fuel-efficient vehicle policy. You don't actually have any vehicles, so it's kind of a, you know, but if you ever got any vehicles, you would, by adopting the fuel-efficient policy, you would be, the non-exempt vehicles, it says, and in the event that at any time Berlin acquires non-exempt vehicles as part of its fleet, the community will adopt the Green Communities Fuel-Efficient Vehicle Policy, which simply talks about, has to meet a certain number of miles per gallon for various types of vehicles.
So the buses are not considered our vehicles?
No, because we don't own them.
Okay.
Your contract out for them.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I've read the motor vehicle policy, and it looks fairly benign to me.
You're going to get a pink caddy for somebody or something someday, you never know.
A pink Prius.
Yes.
Prius, yes.
Yeah.
Right. And I, I did see that you have two anti-idling policies, which are fine. I can use those to send them along. You've already adopted that.
Yeah.
Yep. Any questions?
Is there a particular motion that we need to make for that item?
Um, let's see, I think I sent a sample letter.
Yes, you did.
Which is a sample letter from the state.
That's, that's not what you intended, your reduction plan, right? No, that's, that's one letter to send.
Right.
For the township of town schools.
Let's see, I have one signed by the Board of Selectmen. At a public meeting of the Berlin, whatever you call yourself now.
School Committee?
Well, I saw, the stuff I saw in the other one all had Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee.
Union 60?
Union 60. It didn't have Berlin School Committee on it.
Oh, the policy?
Yes.
Right, because they're obligated, because Union 60 covers, covers the elementary school.
Okay.
In this case, it would be Berlin.
So at a public meeting of the Berlin School Committee held on.
May 9.
May 9. The, uh, what was it, the Board of Selectmen? The Berlin School Committee voted to adopt the attached fuel efficiency policy.
Okay.
Can I come to the superintendent, Judy?
And you could sign this, Superintendent. Tom signed it for. It's, it's just.
Oh, the idling policy.
Well, it's the fuel efficient, it combines them all into one.
Do I need to see the wording of it? I think I have a great one, but I can't use it for that.
Do you want to see whatever you signed?
Okay. Cover both the areas.
Yeah, it has to cover both the town.
Yep, yep.
Did you want to see? Did you read it?
So the motion on that, Chris, would be that the school committee authorized, does it make, authorize the superintendent to sign off on that policy?
Do I hear that motion?
So to sign up on the fuel-efficient vehicles policy for the town of Berlin? And for the energy? I mean, the superintendent to sign? Yes, for Green Communities. That's what it is.
What was it, sorry? Sign off. First you said the fuel efficiency policy?
Yeah, the fuel efficiency, emission vehicle policy.
Okay.
For, I guess it would be for the Green Communities.
Communities.
So what is it, we have, we authorize Dr. DeBrul to?
Yes. Superintendent.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, he must have discovered it's just on his, this is, he tried to write the address in the town.
Would you like a copy of that? I have another copy.
I think I actually have a copy.
I think I gave it to you.
You all gave us a huge packet.
I felt bad.
She's very good. I wondered all these, what these staples were all for.
So did you guys make that motion?
Did I hear that motion? Moved that motion.
We have two on the table. We authorize Dr. DeBrul.
That's, will that, will that do for this?
As long as you write me a letter that says what it needs to say, and he signs that, I'm happy.
Okay. So we're authorizing Dr. DeBrul to sign off on the policy for Green Communities?
Whatever letter, I have a letter in front of me, but.
Fuel, the, this one. The.
Fuel efficiency vehicles policy.
Yeah.
Nikki, so moved.
Yes, and you second it? Any other discussion? No. Okay.
Are you in a hurry? All in favor say aye.
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 So if you give that back to me, please.
I'm discussing.
Then I'll sign off, and I'll send the original to Judy, and we'll keep a copy for our records.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
We'll get it out, we'll get it out to the right away.
Yeah, I have Nikki and you, well.
Well, thank you very much. And I would not, I will not overload Courtney by saying that's over for the entire HVAC system.
We went right into that next motion.
Right.
And you, and you want me to draft this letter too, right? The sample letter they have.
Right.
And the first.
Berlin School Committee adopted the Town of Berlin Energy Reduction Plan for Criteria Three of the Green Communities Application Designation presented by the Berlin Energy Commission. So we'll put that on official letterhead.
Yes.
And we'll sign it, and we'll send a copy to you.
And you also have to send one saying that you adopted the energy efficiency policy.
I have three.
Okay, so two letters and a return of the.
Okay.
I have three.
I miss anything?
One for the transportation.
Thank you very much.
So we do not need the second motion that we made, which was to support the policy for efficient vehicles?
That's the one you just.
We started to make that one, and then we changed it to authorizing him to sign.
Okay.
So, well, by authorizing him to sign it, then you more or less stopped it and approved it.
Same thing.
Okay.
So that's one.
That's why I was saying, we need two letters and the policy returned.
Okay.
And just so, I mean, we, we did vote that the Berlin School Committee voted to adopt a Town of Berlin Energy Reduction Plan for Criteria Three?
Yes.
Yep, that was the first one. We did that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay, you'll have a school that is warm when it should be warm and cool when it should be cool.
Thanks to our energy committee.
You might be tired, but.
Thanks, Judy.
All right.
So is the committee?
We're, actually, the first thing I wanted to do after, since Judy's presentation is over, is to thank the administration and the town officials and voters at Town Meeting for their support. Get over there and move that camera.
There's that one.
Oh. Is it pointing at me?
I never tried to hide from surveillance, Chris.
Apparently I don't get that, do I? All right. I just wanted to thank everyone for their support at Town Meeting of our school budgets and our warrant articles.
Is this camera, is the camera?
Are you on camera?
I don't know. Okay. And we're moving on, and we're in the process of signing payroll and payable warrants. We have a consent agenda, which includes a letter for, oh, wait a minute. No, the consent agenda, boy, am I screwed up tonight. Has the April 11th open session needing minutes. Do I hear a motion to?
So moved. Second.
Does anybody have anything to be said on those minutes? Okay, and I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we've got communications, correspondence from Bodich and Dewey, who takes care of our Reed Tyler Scholarship, which we will address down under the business items. But I did want to tell the committee that when Dorothy Dimitri, the trust officer for many years for the Reed Tyler Trust Fund, called to see if it was all right to send this communication to my address, she also wanted to let me know that she will be retiring in August, and that it has been a pleasure to work with the Berlin School Committee on behalf of Reed Tyler Scholarship. And she's sure that the next trust officer will do a wonderful job helping us to take care of this scholarship. So petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. Oh, yeah, yeah. The communication itself just says that this year, the sum of $12,175.60 is available for grants to students, which is based on the total return concept of four and one-half percent of the account's market value averaged over the prior 12 quarters. And she will await the list of names and schools of the students to whom these grants will be issued.
Thank you.
Petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. Oh, good. Okay, we'll move on to reports. Is there a CPAC report? Nope? Okay. Superintendent, report.
Okay, Madam Chairperson, just want to report for the benefit of the public, I mean, because you've heard a lot of this before, but just on the building committee, the project is on schedule and within budget. And if anyone's been driving by the new school lately, you can see like significant exterior work being done on the building, and it's really shaping up really, really well. The school building committee is meeting tomorrow night, 5 o'clock, to go into the building to take a look at the way that the auditorium concrete, there's an issue there the way it was poured. And the CTA, the construction company, has a remedy that they'd like to show us tomorrow evening around 5:00. So the whole school building committee will be going to that meeting to look at the remedy that they are proposing, to see if that will fit our criteria for acceptance or not. So that is actually been really only the one issue really that's, that's come up during this whole construction project. In some places, it's off a couple inches, and we're not sure if the, if the remedy can address that, or whether we please into the eye, but they've marked up one, one row, so we will, we will go see that from a number of different angles tomorrow at 5:00, and then have a discussion about whether we will accept the CTA's remedy for that. If not, I mean, the, the ultimate remedy would be to basically report. So we'll, we'll be doing that tomorrow evening. And also, we have on the, on the agenda, agenda for the school building committee, there is a request from the Tohato Regional Committee for, for cost, for funding, for contingency funds for approximately $70,000 for move-in cost to move us from the old high school to the new high school. As you know, the way it's set up right now, we basically have about one week for Chris' vacation to go from the old high school to the new high school. And that's not something that we're going to do with three custodians, no matter how much volunteer help we have. So this will help us, we assume this will pass tomorrow night, and that we can develop very concrete plans on how we're going to handle that move during, during that, during that week. So we'll be going in, in bits specs obviously for that too.
I thought that, was there an idea, something floating around, that I was hearing, something about like the prisoners helping out or something like that, because school will not be in session?
Well, that, that's a possibility. We actually, we rewrote that letter and sent it to Sheriff Evangelitis, I hope I said correctly, today. As a matter of fact, we sent that out. We have to be somewhat judicious on that, you know, obviously in, in terms of, and we worked very well with the county jail before, and they've done a lot of work for us consistently, and it's been a good situation. We basically provide them lunch, nice lunch, and they come in, and they've actually found it very, very pleasing to work in the community. It's been a pleasure to have them. But once again, we're there to minimize any contact between them and students, and of course, that week there are no students in the building. So yes, we've written a letter, we've asked for the possibility for assistance during that week. We'd fall right upon it. Last day of school. As you know, this has been a very unusual winter. In some cases, it's, in most cases, it's been fairly mild, and we haven't had really any major issues. But the ones we've had have been some really, some real woppers. If you remember back on August 29th, we had Hurricane Irene, Irene, seems like 1,000 years ago, but we canceled professional development that day because the person that was coming in, trees fell on her car and her husband's car and couldn't get out. Other people had problems getting here too, in terms of faculty, so we did reschedule that at another later date. And then, of course, we couldn't get to school, because the roads were just clogged up, no power one day, and then the roads were just impassable the other day. So obviously, that's where most of our delays have come from. We actually only had one real official snow day, so to speak, that was on, on March 1st. The rest are all due to that, that freak October, November storm. So for Berlin Memorial, the last day of school will be June 22nd, and that's the official day. And I assume Carol will put that on the website, just reminding parents that that is the last, last day of school, which just so happens to coincide with Boylston Elementary this year too. Usually the rougher day, but this year they, they're the same day. Anyone's interested also, Tohato, June 25th is the last day of school at, for students at Tohato, and June 26th is makeup day, makeup exam day for students, and of course, the last day of teams. So that's all, yeah.
Okay, great.
Incoming Superintendent Nadine, incoming Superintendent-elect Nadine Extrom actually was here last week at an appreciation luncheon for teachers. She was invited by, if I mean, this is wrong, Carol, please stop me, parents to come here, so pleasantly surprised to walk in and see her here, but I think it was a nice, it was very nice, got to meet, obviously, the faculty and a lot of parents and some community members, so spent some time with us. And actually, yesterday, I was, I spent some time with her also at a Masters Association Regional School Committee meeting. We chatted a little bit more about entry-exit plans, her entry, my exit. And she'll be coming on board on, should we hear on Thursday, March, I'm sorry, Thursday, May 24th? And she's going to tour the schools on that day. So we will probably start off first thing in the morning at the Central Office introducing her to people, the Central Office people, and then we'll probably slip down to Boylston Elementary from there, and then we'll go over to the region, and maybe Berlin, I know you have your ear in the water for her to be here, but she can't be replaced us at one time, but you already saw her anyhow, so.
Show her a building, though.
But yes, yeah, so we'll be making a rounds all that day. So she's very, looking forward to meeting faculty people, and I'll be introducing her, unless the school committee wishes to. unless the school committee wishes to, that's up to you, to members of the town hall, you know, town clerk, town treasurer, whoever happens to be in, we can buy, same with Boyle's. So, that'll be a full day, and then we'll have some little discussions during the course of the day about her full-time entry into the district. So, it's going well, going very, very well. So, that's what's happening on that day. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Well, actually, I was going to let the committee know down under comments from the school committee, there was, you know, just a quick update on the FAC meeting that I went to on Tuesday, and I happened to mention that the new superintendent would like to come and meet the town officials, and they let me know that there's going to be on the evening of May 24th, a town officers' meeting, because the Highland Commons, I guess, is asking to renegotiate the mitigation package, and the selectmen, I guess, would like some input from town officials, and I didn't know whether she might be available to come a little before that meeting.
Is she going to be here at town hall?
It'll be here, right.
I could inquire, I don't know what her evening schedule is.
I think Judy said seven. Seven.
So, it would be before then?
If she would like to do, meet them then, otherwise, you know, Monday through Thursday, I think everybody's here till 2:00.
We would definitely swing by on the 24th too during that day.
Okay.
We would definitely make that appointment, but I won't mention it to her.
Okay, well, leave it up to her if she wants to come, if she doesn't get a chance to meet people.
Okay.
We're hoping they'll all show up to talk about the mitigation package.
And she's going to be out in June too?
Yeah.
So, she has a number of days in June, vacation days in June, where she will be out in the district, but I think she wants to make a concentrated effort to see the faculty before school is dismissed.
Yeah. Okay. Director of Financial Services, report.
First, I have a report for you this evening, and actually, it was presented to you, I think about a month ago.
Yeah.
Regarding the school lunch program. Oh, actually, that's down in bold, sorry. We'll do that down in the bold. Well, no, I actually, we would do it both, in both areas, I guess, because of both is actually afterwards. Apologize for that. So, we'll first take up the agenda item summary that I have regarding the school lunch fee increase. When I presented it to you about a month ago, I did have an error in the order, I put all the students, although that would be wonderful. It would solve our problem, we wouldn't have to increase it either, you know, well, I don't know about that, but, so I did fix that, and, you know, certainly, the revenue, the projection of revenue on the proposed increase goes down dramatically, but, you know, you would ask that I go back and rethink it. To be honest with you, my recommendation to you would still be the same to keep it consistent with the other two, and I have a couple of reasons why, it's not just for consistency, certainly, but we have seen participation increase more this year. I have talked with Carol, I've talked with Marielle, and I did meet with the manager as she came down and viewed the school lunch, I looked at the facilities, they're wonderful, they do a fabulous job keeping those facilities sparkling clean, I'll tell you, I was very, very impressed, and I looked, you know, basically just observed and talked to them a little bit.
Did you have lunch too?
No, no, I didn't get down.
Talk and eat at the same time.
But certainly, the participation is increasing, and I do feel that if we were to increase it by, in other words, in order for us to make an impact revenue-wise substantially, you would have to increase it to such a degree, we might lose all participation, we'll be going in the wrong direction, to be honest with you. So, I do still feel that we, you know, have the small increase, which is 25 cents that I originally recommended, 25 cents for the school lunch going from 225 to 250, and then the regular breakfast increasing by 25 cents going from $1 to $1.25. We are talking about having the, I know this sounds funny, but the Egg McMuffin breakfast, I guess, has not been instituted here, I think that students would like that, and so we're talking about, see if we can accommodate that with the scheduling, that's number one we were thinking of, the participation is increasing, and then there are a number of other things that we can work on that is going to take some time, but, you know, there are definitely, you know, some issues, you know, I have to say that school lunch programs are very hard to keep in the black, regardless of the school district, and as you do know, the general fund has for a number of years been supporting, offsetting some of the expenses for a number of years, and so it will be a work in progress, and we need to kind of attack it from a number of fronts, but I still would recommend that modest increase for now, as we work through that, and then it should be looked at, I think, again, next year, and should be looked at regularly, really, there should be a reporting on it regularly, I feel, at least every year, so that really all three school committees know what's going on with their food service programs, regardless, and that way you have, you know, the history, continue that trend history, so you can see what's going on and keep adding to the years, and see what's going on year to year, you know, as far as improvements and whether or not, again, we need to revisit the fee issue also.
Okay. Can you have any questions?
What is this Egg McMuffin, is it like from McDonald's, we say McMuffin, or is it?
Well, they call it.
You probably should call it that.
Okay. That's what I'm wondering, I believe, we serve it, we're not serving. But, no, 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 from McDonald's, but it's made similarly.
An egg sandwich is basically what it is, okay.
Yes, on a muffin.
Egg McMoreal.
Egg McMoreal. Yeah, there you go, there you go, see?
Does it have sausage and bacon?
Well, I don't know.
Do you have a drive-up window?
No, it's against their bylaws.
No, I don't think.
And no more projects.
Okay, then, so, down here is the motion that you.
Oh, yes, yeah, I tried to put it there so you don't have to.
Motion to approve the increase of the student lunch fee beginning in the 2012-2013 school year from 225 to 250, an increase of 25 cents on the regular breakfast from $1 to $1.25, an increase of a quarter. This increase does not apply to the Egg McMoreal sandwich. Okay, so do I hear that motion? Is it moved?
Second.
Anything else to be said? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You got the motion?
I do. Well, thank you, so we actually covered the agenda item summary in addition to the vote, okay, at the same time, okay. Next, we have the water testing update, and included in your packet, we do, we did forward to you an email, just so you would see it in writing, coming from a gentleman from Whitewater, which is the firm that we use with regard to water testing and things of that nature. And as you know, the town meeting did recently approve, and we're very thankful for that, some funds to repair the boiler, but certainly, we want to look at addressing the water issue if that may prematurely, you know, ruin a boiler again. So, certainly, we want to do things in the right order, we are currently working on this, we are waiting for a report on the water that actually goes into the boiler, that's what we're talking about precisely, not the drinking water or anything like that, that is absolutely fine. And we are having an engineer, actually, I was expecting him to come today, but I did check with Carol and Joe, and he did not arrive today, but they have, he has to set up a time to come down with Carol and Joe, and actually, look at the situation, have an engineer look at it along with the water report they currently have, and then make some proposals on what we might need to do to address the issue. It could be some filtration of the water going into the boiler, it could require some work actually, a little bit on the outside, so we need to see how extensive that might be, don't expect it to be very extensive, but we do need to involve also the Department of Environmental Protection from the state, that's part of it, it's actually required. And once we do receive that, we would be looking to try to mitigate, address that issue, and then, you know, proceed accordingly, and then as soon as possible thereafter, get the boiler repair done.
Okay.
And DEP, I mean, once we involve DEP, it gets complicated.
Yeah, they dictate everything.
Because of safety in water, and it gets complicated.
Yeah. You'll just keep us updated then.
Oh, we certainly will, yes, and I'm expecting to hear from this gentleman.
Shortly.
Post haste, yes, or I'll be contacting him, we really need to get that report, and we need to get the engineers, we need to get that information, we need to get moving on it, so I will be contacting him actually tomorrow.
Okay.
We didn't hear from him today, so.
Question?
So, if it's a water issue, both boilers that we have would be having problems, because no, we have only one boiler that's been damaged, it's probably not, I mean, I think you might be jumping the gun by assuming that it's watering.
Oh, we're not just assuming, we're not just assuming anything. No, we have some, you know, information that is very well be.
We'll see when we get the report. We don't know, that's why we're doing the investigation.
We should understand what the state of the other boiler is, at a minimum. I mean, if one has, you know, rotted out from the inside, well, the other one has the same water in it.
Yeah, it was actually, she suggested when we went to the FAC meeting by some town officials, that we check into it as far as the quality of the water for the boiler, so it wasn't a bad idea.
Exactly, you're correct, exactly, came from there too, right.
One that recommended.
Right, right.
I remember.
So, it's worth looking into?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
So, we don't have a prematurely deteriorated boiler again?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you, Courtney.
I mean, actually, if I, I know it's not, audience, anybody, this is another issue. We do, we have received three quotes, I do have three quotes for the intercom system, and I then actually had a meeting with the gentleman, myself, Joe Baldassari and Carol, and I was very pleased with his presentation, his materials, his costing, everything. We actually went and looked at the units and everything. The, I did get the prevailing wage sheets for it and subsequently sent them to him to make sure that his quote is also including the required, as you know, that's required by Mass General Law, prevailing wage, I don't expect any issue with that, also got a cost on replacing the amplifier, which is also 10 years old, that we will be replacing everything. It should all fall within the $15,000, it was voted by the town to take care of that, including the amplifier and the clocks. So, we're really moving quite along on that, I'm just waiting for confirmation from him. We have to contact the telephone company to look with regard to connectivity, and checked on the batteries, we're all set with that, that was preliminarily, that was going to be a large cost, but that worked out to be absolutely fine, and he needs to have one of his, a gentleman from his firm come down and actually look at things to make sure that the infrastructure, we can't, no, 100%, obviously, they can't look at every single wiring within the walls and everything, but they can do some testing just to make sure that, to, you know, see with regard to proceeding, so that is actually coming along, it's come a long way in the past month, so I wanted to let you know about that too.
Is this something that's going to happen over the summer, do you think?
Oh, we're hoping, we're hoping, oh, absolutely.
Great.
Yes, oh, yes, I don't see why that could not be done.
Right.
Yeah, it's looking very good.
Good.
I think this is just some of the issues that have been, what you had talked about back in the fall that have been knocking around for a couple of years.
Right, this was an article that was approved a couple of years ago and had not been followed up on, so I appreciate it, appreciate your work.
So, keep you posted.
Okay, thanks. Carol, do you have a report for us this evening?
I have a great deal of appreciation to extend tonight, first to the townspeople for supporting us, as Chris mentioned, with the budget this year, and I, the capital plans, the budget, put a lot of trust in us and faith in the work that we're doing to come up with a fiscally sound budget and be responsible, and I appreciate, I want everybody to know how much I appreciate that, everything just ran so smoothly that night for us with the articles approved for capital plan, so. I also wanted to thank CPAC, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, who presented their Excellent Educator of the Year awards at our recent luncheon, teacher appreciation luncheon, and I did want to mention those folks who received this year's awards, Jennifer Ricard, Rachel Peeny, Deb Ellis, and Molly Nozick were honored by CPAC this year for their work with, and Peter Daly, that's right, thank you, for their work with children, and received a beautiful certificate, and also, what was most touching are the letters they receive each year from the parents of these children that are read and are just enough to make you cry, which we often do when we hear them, because it just means so much to the teachers to get that appreciation. So, and on a larger scale, I also wanted to mention that it is Teacher Appreciation Week this week, we had a beautiful luncheon on Friday sponsored by Link, the volunteers were all there, and they're all fed very well, and received lots of wonderful gifts and raffle prizes throughout the week, it took a lot of effort, and folks really put their heart and soul into making this week so special for all of us, and I also want to thank my teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week who put their heart and soul into their work every day at Burling, we, I just am in awe sometimes of the dedication they have to the children, and many people are there well into the late afternoon, doing work and on phone calls with parents, and just doing so much to the best of our children, so thanks to all my staff this week.
That was a wonderful luncheon, by the way.
Yeah, it was a wonderful luncheon, thank you. I also, when Mike had mentioned our last day of school, I also wanted to make note that it is a half-day, it's our early release day, so.
I thought that was automatic.
Can plan for that. Yeah, I don't know, I just wanted to make sure I said that. Also, the other thank you, on Thursday, May 24th, we have our annual Memorial Day ceremony, our assembly, this year, it's especially important because we will be dedicating the Vietnam plaque, which is many years in the making, and Ray Ellis has been instrumental, I wish he was here tonight to honor him because he's worked so hard to get that in place and has been visiting our school many times his past weeks to measure and think about where it's going to go and how it's going to be placed, and he's just done so much for us with that plaque, and it's so impressive to see it, and what I also was amazed at today, he set up the highway department to come over and hang it today, and honestly, that plaque is so heavy that there was probably about seven gentlemen out there lifting that plaque, because you have to align it and place it and make sure it doesn't crash to the ground, and it was incredible joint effort, so thanks to the guys from the highway department for helping Ray and our custodians to get that up, so.
I think Ray put the other, one of the other ones up previously, but.
Yes, and my goodness.
She needs a little help this year.
Yeah, 130, I was even enlisting visitors coming into the school, gentlemen who were coming for different, to meet with our head custodian earlier in the day to carry it out of his car, and I'd say, what are you doing while you're waiting, can you just go help lift it out of the car? We had, everybody was involved, so. Also, just quick reminders, Note-a-Thon is this Thursday, that raises money for our band.
Can you explain that a little bit? I wasn't sure.
The students pledge, or their families pledge money per note that the children play, and they do performances, so it's very individual performances throughout the evening, so, and it's a little recital for them, so, a lot of fun, right? Link and the money goes to Link, so it comes back to us, so that's great. And then we have our spring chorus concert, 7:00 Friday, May 18th, and that is at BES this year, it is every, every spring, that's where that's held. What else did I want to tell you? The other quick thing, I had mentioned in the agenda that I want to talk about, the mission statement, we finished the statement the way we wanted it to read, we do want to present that to the school committee at our June meeting along with the handbook, we voted on it as a school council that we wanted that to go forward, we're still working on the vision statement, I think that's going to take a little bit more time, we had a very, very rich discussion on that at our last school council meeting, and really did a lot of reflecting on where we see the future of our school, what we want it to look like, what we want it to be, and talked about the beliefs and values that we hold as important to our school, so it's a very rich conversation, and you're certainly invited, if you have a chance, I can let you know our next date of our meeting, so you can listen and hear what we're talking about during those meetings. So, I will bring that to you with the handbook at the June meeting, as well as, I think, pretty much a decision about the electronic devices. I had a chance to talk, we had a big discussion with Link on last Thursday at our meeting about the ages, and we're looking at 4 through 6 to allow the devices to come into school for grades 4 through 6, and to see how that works next year.
Was it 5 and 6?
5 and 6 we had with it, and I think I had shared with you that it really was not a big issue, we're willing to open it up to 4th grade, we thought, the parent community really strongly felt that that was probably a good age to end that for now, rather than extending it into the early grades, but we also talked about the idea of having more of those devices available in the school, so that families did not feel the need or had to send them into school, that they were. But we also talked about the idea of, of having more of those devices available in the school, so that families did not feel the need or, or had to send them into school, that they were available for children to be able to utilize in the libraries, in classrooms, and also certainly in their, in special education, we have them in some of the other support areas in school. So, that's something I'm looking at as far as funding those in the future.
Just a caveat to that, if the handbook for some reason is not ready for the June meeting, can you make sure that we have the discipline section of the handbook ready for presentation that evening, so the school committee can vote that? Because that would be critical for you to operate when you open up school, you know, in August.
Yes, and also especially around the work we're doing with PBIS, that we do have a good deal to submit for that piece.
I mean, if nothing else, that, at least that piece.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to the business items, we've covered the presentation of the energy savings plan. The school lunch fee increase, I believe we took care of. So, we'll take care of the policy JFBB school choice, and you've asked that it be a final read?
If the, if the committee, I think for us to implement it, you would have to be a final read. You know, as you know, right now, the, the, the policy, the way it has been constructed, states that if a random draw is necessary for slots, if, that that will take place the last week of the current, of the current school year, year that you're in. The phone calls that we've been getting from parents, and even that is at the superintendent's office, I can't imagine what it might be down at the elementary schools or the high school, is that, you know, parents really want to know, I mean, not the third week, the last week of school, and this week, this year would be the last, the third week in June, almost the last week in June. They really want to know it earlier, so my suggestion, as I mentioned to the Boylson committee last night, and I was, obviously we'll take this up with the region too, is to do it right after, right after town meeting. I mean, that way there we know we have a budget, the budget's been passed, we know we have a staff, we're gonna act upon it, and we should be able to, if we need, this is only for a random draw, I mean, if we need a random draw, then we do it right away, the second, the second week in, in May. Allow us to do that versus, right now, it's, it's just so, it's just so late in the year. And that would be, I think, helpful to, to all of us.
Okay, any questions from the committee?
First one says that by May first of every school year, does that give enough time to make the determination and then turn around?
That's your drop deadline, if you read it closely, it's that by May first of every school year.
By May first, okay.
Okay, so you can do that earlier than, by law, you have to vote, obviously, with to whether you're gonna withdraw from school choice. And that guarantees that you'll make that decision, you know, prior to, prior to May first, you can make it anytime you want.
Okay.
So, this is a previous policy, just making these changes?
Exactly the same policy except number four, where it reads now that it's the third week in, well, I'm sorry, the last week of the current school year, but no later than July one, and we would strike that and then we would say, we'll do it the second week in May.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the school choice policy?
I think you'd have, if I may, Madam Chairperson, I think first you'd have to waive your policy in two reads.
Right.
Okay, and then come back and then make, make, make the motion to approve this policy.
Okay, do I hear a motion to waive the first two reads of the school choice policy JFBB? So, moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And do I hear a policy, or do I hear a motion to approve the school, the new school choice policy JFBB with the changes recommended by the superintendent?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The next one is your, your policy JIE on pregnant students, always would take this up with the region already. The policy we had in place is against the regulations. And major changes, you cannot deny a student coming to school if they don't have a doctor's note. So, we've changed this to conform with current state law and regulation.
Okay, and this has been approved at the region?
That is correct.
Did we do all three reads for that?
No, we did a first read at the region.
Okay, so do you want, this should be first read?
Yeah, this, this is not critical, I mean.
Okay, all right.
But it should be, it should, it should be taken care of.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve policy JIE, pregnant students for, for first read? So moved.
Second.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Your next policy, IHBAA, Special Education Program Observation, you do have existing policy at all three schools for parents to come in and observe students in the classroom and how that is done and the procedures. New state law requires we have a separate policy, which pretty much mirrors the policy you have now, but for Special Education Program Observation. So, that's a change in Mass General Law under chapter seventy-one B, section three. This is the policy you've already voted at the region, that's been vetted out by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and now recommended you adopt this policy for procedures to how to, how to accommodate Special Education Program Observation.
Do I hear a motion to approve Special Education Program Observation Policy, IHBAA for first read? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I didn't know if you, just a suggestion, I didn't know if you, under F, you have school choice enrollment discussion, just something that those principals have to, if you could discuss this evening. I don't know if you want to take that now, or if you wanted, I don't know how long that discussion will go, or if you want to do the Reed Tyler Scholarship Update first and get that out of the way, or?
It's a very quick update, we could do that.
I mean.
We've received, I believe, about eighteen applications, they've been distributed to the subcommittee and we're in process of setting a date to review. And then I believe we're gonna have to have a meeting, at least a school committee meeting, and I can pretend the subcommittee would need to come necessarily to approve, so that we can give out seniors.
For, what is the date of graduation?
June second, whatever.
June second?
June the second.
Because we usually get them out, we get them out to the.
Whatever Sunday is.
Right.
We may have need to just.
June third.
Oh, third.
Third, okay.
So, we'll need to do that.
I'm sorry.
We were just, we were just thinking, having, we'd have to have a, a meeting to approve their recommendation for scholarships before Tohonto graduation, so that we could get the scholarships at graduation. I think it could be a very quick meeting, but it would have to be after your subcommittee meets.
Correct. And we just got, it takes a little while to go through.
Suggestion could be, you could meet before the regional meeting if you're ready. And you could, you know, meet fifteen minutes, if it's not too late, then you could meet fifteen minutes before the region, we have time to post that. You could conduct your business then and then merge into the regional meeting if that's helpful to you, because I think your next, your next scheduled meeting of the Burlan School Committee is not till June thirteenth.
Right.
So, that'll put you out, but, but I think you could, yeah, we would have time to post that, but obviously for the regional meeting, which is next, next Thursday, we sort of could put it ahead of that if you want to do that.
I'll have to check with the subcommittee and get back to you, is that reasonable?
Just trying to give you options, that's all.
We'll have to have an emergency Burlan meeting.
We're constructing a, a whole, a, a different meeting, but, but that doesn't, we could post that too, whatever you want to do.
That's about it.
All right. So, why don't you share?
This is a, I mean, a conversation actually started with Carol and I, one day we started to talk about, you know, school choice and school, school choice slots, and it had actually morphed into a much more complicated conversation. And I'll let Carol speak, you know, obviously for herself, just regarding, I guess, the future direction of Burlan Memorial School in terms of a number of factors. I mean, one is school choice enrollment, which is one, but the other one's just the general impact of enrollment and how enrollment is playing out, not just now, but how enrollment may play out for the next four, five, six, or seven years. So, I mean, it went from one conversation on, on school choice, where originally we started to talk about the numbers of students coming into kindergarten, the projected enrollment, as you know, for next year is twenty-one, twenty-one students, count one student being school choice, which two sections breaks down to ten and eleven students. And we had a conversation about that and, and then from there, I mean, and obviously looking at, at other student teacher ratios that are happening within the Burlan Memorial School. And then we had asked, Carol had asked Karen Callahan, her secretary, who contacted Eloise, to give us the projections for future incoming kindergarten classes, and that's what you have in front of you tonight. So, some of this email you have in front of you came from Carol to me with, with the numbers and then in bold, I, those are my comments in bold, but as you can see, in the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, we are right now, this is a projection, right now, we're looking at fifteen children coming into kindergarten. You know, year after, fourteen, fifteen, twenty-seven, year after, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-eight, now, these are all subject, as we all know, thousands of things could happen between now and then in terms of change and people coming into, into the district. I mean, as I said to the Boylson committee last night, and I say to the Burlan committee tonight, I mean, if these towns would put sewers in, then you would can throw that out the window, and I'm sure you would see, blah, boom, you know, major, major housing construction going up, just because of the ideal location of both towns demographically. And also the excellent reputation, I think, of the schools and the character of, of both those towns. But that not being said, it doesn't look like there's a lot of building plans being formulated for either town, but obviously this is Berlin, for the town of Berlin that we're aware of right now. So, that is something that, that, you know, that's gonna impact upon, on the educational programs here for the future years. So, I'll turn it over to you from here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, this year, we've had to reduce the sixth grade to one class because of the number of twenty-one students that we have in the sixth grade. We lost two children so far that we know of with a potential of a third, and so we consolidated that once again into one class. It seems to be that the direction that we're going in, I'm concerned because we, we do have nine students on the waiting list for school choice, and as we talked about the last meeting, I mean, I would, I would request all of them, but I understand, again, we talked about being fiscally responsible, you know, what, what kind of impact that would have to the school if we continue to let that many school choice children in every, every year. I'm, one of the, so, that would give us ten and eleven, as Mike said. If you look at the numbers that we got from Eloise this year, you see we originally had twenty-four children, and that's what we were looking at when we first came to the school choice decision, we made that vote. Since that time, we lost the five, five children for various reasons, some decided not to send their children this year, some folks went out privately, a variety of things happened. And that's, from what, what my secretary said, that typically happens every year, even looking at the numbers we have for the future years, while it might say fifteen children, that could end up being ten, and when, when all is said and done, so it fluctuates that much. One thing that we looked at, i- if we did want to open up school choice slots at all for this coming year, is the possibility of moving, we have four slots still open for fifth grade, and we have no students currently on any waiting list to come into fifth grade. If for this year, we're able to move four slots into an opening for kindergarten this year, so that we would have, what would that be? Twenty-five, twelve?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five kids, so.
Twelve and a half, we'll cut them.
And a half, I, I did very unofficially hear that we might be getting another kindergartner in next year, so we have, you know, we will have thirteen in, in each class spot. But, that's sort of a Band-Aid for the years to come, and, and I'm not, again, as I, I said to, to Chris when we spoke about this on Friday, I'm, I do, just I'm not sure where we're going with all of this and, and what we need to do. We certainly, we have thirty-three of our students right now are school choice already, that would be thirty-seven, and then we'll climb, I mean.
Yeah, I understand, Carol, it's no, no, genuine and deep concern for this and, and regarding, you know, the very low enrollments and how they can translate into not only staff reductions in the future, but that less students in the classroom. There's, there's a point with the chemistry that involves there regarding social learning as well as interactive learning with students could negative, could be negatively impacted, and, and I agree with that. I, I think it's a very valid concern. On the other hand, if I just run some, run some numbers, which I've run some numbers for you, you know, for you, and I've given them to Carol too, is, you know, I mean, sometimes the, this is my, what I hear, sometimes the school committee or community members are concerned with the fact that, you know, about subsidizing the town of Berlin or the taxpayer subsidizing and sending school choice. That is not the case now, completely not the case now, we are sprinkling kids in here and they are actually enhancing the programs that we have now, as we all know, with the significant amount of money that we've applied to school choice, from school choice to operate the Berlin budget this year, which had a tremendous savings to the, to the town, to the town of Berlin, no, for municipal government. And I think that was done very, very wisely this year. But, you know, just looking at a, I guess, a mathematical algorithm from going out from now till, till, let's say, the next six years, I mean, if we took in students in the K this year, and I'm looking at, at nine students this year, and next year enrollment will be taking nine more, and then we, we, we look at that over a five, six-year period. Now, I mean, we, we know, we'd be taking in like another forty-five school choice kids, add to the current population, this is over time, okay, and then you look at.
Enrollment stays low, right?
Right, you're regular, yeah, yeah, that's, this is full of, this is not.
Right.
Precise at all, this is just as things stand as of today, and it encompasses a, a lot of things that, that we know right now, things could change radically, but, you know, you, you take a look at that, you took at the incoming revenues that you would get from school choice using that large number of kids, maybe you're talking three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of revenues. But if you're looking at the teaching staff, it probably costs you somewhere in the neighborhood of, what do I say, another four hundred and twenty-six thousand to maintain that, that you would not have if you got to a point where you were actually condensing classrooms over time. And of course, your percentage of school choice population is gonna get higher, I mean, you know, much higher, it would probably be operating around forty, fifty percent, and I think those concerns about subsidizing school choice are pretty, it's gonna be valid, you know, as far as that's concerned. So, it's a balance, it's definitely a balancing act, I mean, there are concerns, I think, on both ends, and I think, and I, I do agree with Carol a hundred percent about some of the concerns she has, you know, regarding social and academic interaction, and, and it's just about, it's good, always had good to have two sections, sometimes students and teachers don't click, you know, I mean, these things do happen, and it's nice to have another option where, you know, someone can go, you know, someplace else. But maybe I'd be disingenuous as a superintendent if I didn't point out to you all the factors that are there to do due diligence regarding just how that might play out, you know, over time, it may not. And maybe there's a happy medium of doing some of the mixing and matching, you've done some of this mixing, mixing and matching already, and I think you've done it very well, and we benefited, benefited from it, you know, regarding, you know, school choice, we've been applied to keep the, keep the positions we have now. If we did not have that school choice, then you would probably be in a much more serious rip situation, I mean, barring overrides, which I think we all realize, with the Tohonto project, that's D O A on arrival, so. So, it has worked out well, I think, with the community as a whole, but those are the concerns, you know. So, it talks about the future direction of, I think, that's what we were talking about later on, saying, well, where we going? Where we going with this whole thing?
I wish we had crystal ball about the student enrollment.
Yeah.
But I did, I did mention it to a community member I ran into at, at the Stups. And she reminded me that there is in the next couple of years, a mixed, possible mixed use, gonna go in down at River Bridge, where they may have some housing, like apartments and that kind of thing, which they figured would, would have more children that would be going to the elementary school. But there isn't a big, huge boom.
I heard double the town's population, I don't know, is any.
Well, they assured us that it would not be double, at least not double the Burlan Memorial School population. I mean, as far as children, no. But I had forgotten about that until I ran into her and she mentioned it.
It's an issue, it's, it's an issue you're definitely gonna have to struggle with, I mean, and particularly if you look at, you know, that, that thirteen. I mean, particularly if you look at, you know, that, that thirteen, fourteen school year, and once again, it could all change, but with the possibility of projection, fifteen students coming in.
Yeah, it looks like next year might be a tough, might be a tough decision.
That would be a difficult year for the thirteen, fourteen school year.
Right.
I think what Carol was proposing tonight is that in the fifth grade with the four slots you have, that you would, in a sense, give those slots up, is what you're saying, and you reallocate those to the.
To kindergarten.
To K.
This way we're not adding any more school choice numbers, but we're moving them, shifting them to where there is a desire and a need for.
Because I didn't, I mentioned to Carol, I said, and I thought it was my perception, it's just my perception, that I know when we reviewed school choice back in February or March, I forgot what month, when we actually calculated the number of school choice children that were in the district, and the committee seemed to be maybe taken a little bit back by, I don't know, it was my perception as to how many kids we actually had on the, on the school choice at that time.
Well, it has, it was twelve for ever, never, never, never. And then all of a sudden now, you know, it is, it's a lot higher.
I think we have to be very careful with this, because we're not only committing to these students, but we're also committing, committing to their siblings, which.
Which, to this point, yes, we have been very.
Well, you are on your watch, I mean, not, not by law, I'm just, just read the law, you're, you're not committed to them unless you open up a slot.
Right.
Because you don't have to take them in. Just want to make it very clear.
Up till now, we've been very fortunate.
Oh, no, I understand that, why, I mean, I completely understand, just a point of law, that's all.
Couple of questions out there. Maureen, you have a question?
I just had a question about if they automatically school choice to Berlin Memorial, do they automatically get school choice up to Tohoto?
That is correct.
It's the sending school for Berlin, so they are accepted at the elementary?
So once they're accepted, they, they automatically?
Yep.
They become abs, they're abs students, and we're responsible for them one hundred percent.
Through, through high school.
Special needs, if they develop special needs in the future or whatever, we treat them like our own.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you mentioned being fiscally responsible is one of the aspects of looking at this. From an education perspective, you know, how does it, how does the mix work? Or is it completely transparent to the students, you know, to the out-of-town kids, have their own kind of group? Are their skill levels adequate when they come in? Are there other impacts, you know, what we're talking about is financial here, and I, I would assume that there's other factors involved, and, you know, does Berlin Memorial become, oh, that's a school filled with fifty percent of kids from out of town, that's going to , you know, make locals not want to go there even more?
No, don't start new rumors.
Sorry, that was all hypothetical.
Right.
Well, people wouldn't come into the school of choice, I just want to say publicly, they would not even be considering school of choice, those parents. Parents that usually opt for school of choice are very, are very interested in their children, very invested in their children. So when they're going to make a decision to not have their children go to their home, their homeschool for whatever particular reason, they're going to shop around.
And particularly at the, at the younger level.
Oh, the elementary level, absolutely, all levels.
Might be different at the high school level, middle high school level, but I think at the elementary school, I think you're absolutely right.
Yeah, they're looking, and they see, you know, they see, and they like it.
They've become, we've had some very dedicated school choice parents who've gotten involved, and, you know, the PTO, and, oh, extremely involved in the school and volunteering and making, I think, you know, that's usually the case at the elementary school. It could be just a little different at the high school.
I have not seen it at the high schools, because the bus stop for students for drop off of school choice is at the bottom of the street, so, so they're all there.
He hangs at the bus stop.
It's true, it's true. Bus stop king, you know. We're having snow tomorrow, it's snow day tomorrow. I don't know.
It's the inside scoop at the bus stop.
Yes, I do, I do, I do. But no, I've seen them to be very well accepted, very, very well accepted. And these are sometimes children from very different, different from the typical racial or ethnic or religious background that we have in, generally, that would go to our schools from Berlin, Boylston, and I think it's been a very enriching experience in terms of diversity of the school there, and I think it's about a big benefit. And they've been readily, readily accepted.
Oh, yeah. I think the kids in both of the schools, Tonto and Berlin, are always very accepting of the outside kids, you know, tell me if I'm wrong.
I think for us it's been a very positive experience.
Yeah. Yeah, I do too. I mean, there's certainly, that's, they, they come right, they integrate well in the schools, and they're mixed, and they really, because they come from several different towns, some of them may know each other from past schools, but not necessarily as the case. And all, and the other thing you mentioned, Bill, too, we, we really can't discriminate based on the profile of the child coming in.
Oh, I didn't say you could change, I just, it doesn't have an effect, that's all I asked.
An effect on that. Right. So is there any other questions?
You mentioned that you looked at it in Boylston. What is, is it the same trend you're seeing there?
For?
Like kindergarten?
Just kindergarten, did you look at the years to come for them?
At the kindergarten level, yeah, their, their student teacher ratios at, at Boylston are higher than yours, but not, I mean, they're operating between, I was just there last night, like fourteen to nineteen. The school committee last night wants to keep it at nineteen or under, that's what they're really aiming for. So when they did school choice last night, they really, were doing it again, have done it once, but they took another look at it again, and they really want to limit their numbers to nineteen. For some reason, they were operating under twenty-five school choice students in the last two, three years, and then last year they went down to twelve. I don't know why, because they have applications up to Wazoo, I mean, for, for applications for the school of choice. Then they have gone back into this year, and they're going to bring more students in. Their kindergarten right now, their full-day tuition kindergarten next year will be twenty, no, sixteen and seventeen, trying to wrap my head around two schools now. And then they have their part-time kindergarten, because some parents don't want to go full-time, three days per week, those are currently nine. So there was a proposal on the docket last night to eliminate that teacher who just assigned those three kids into the full-day programs. But after a lot of discussion, we decided we would keep that the same. We still made some budget, some personnel reductions, hard, very difficult, painful reductions last night at, at Boylston Elementary, but that's where their kindergarten is right now. Now, in the future, their incoming classes are projected to be stable, but not growing. So they're about, it's the same, as a matter of fact, next year they're going to have a dip, they have thirty-one kids projected for their kindergarten next year. So they've got, you know, two teachers teaching full-time, because there's this tuition base in the afternoon, and they'll be, that will be a very difficult decision next year, as to whether they're going to keep two-point-six-oh kindergarten teachers, because we're only having, reporting right now, thirty-one kids coming in. So their experience aligns. By the way, this is not just limited to Berlin and Boylston. At the superintendent's meeting before, across the straight state demographically, lots of school districts are seeing major decline in enrollment. Not necessarily so much due to charter schools or school choice, just birth rates are just down, you know, and you're not getting, you know, kids, those projections coming in for future years, and that's happening. Some of the, the schools out in, in the western part, they say they have huge reductions in their enrollment, not now, but forecasted for the next, the next three or four years. Of course, that changes from town to town, depending upon, you know, the demographics and building, and what's going on.
How many students was Tohoto built for?
The new one? Uh, I don't know what the capacity, what the student capacity is, I don't know. And don't ask, don't dare ask me what square footage is, because I have no clue. Someone said to me, you're kidding, I said, no, I don't pay attention to square footage. I don't.
I'm only up to five hundred or something.
Five fifty.
Really? Yeah, five, five fifty.
So I guess my, my thought process is you consider that Boylston is taking a conservative approach to school choice. So I would be concerned if they were being more aggressive, then we would need to be more conservative.
No. They do not want to be the same, caught in a situation where the community are going to accuse them of subsidizing through tax, the taxpayers funding school choice, school choice program. They're doing it just like you, maybe even more so, where they're just sprinkling kids in here and there. I mean, they got a bigger, a bigger base to deal with.
Right.
And so they're already operating with, with their lowest student teacher ratios would be about fourteen. So most of them are operating at a higher level, don't have the same acute issues you have here in, in Berlin, but they're doing the same thing, they're sprinkling them in where it makes sense to augment the program, where they're not going to have to hire, you know, additional personnel, or things of this type of nature, where the percentage of school choice students are going, are going to arise a lot. Like I said, right now, they're, they had twelve, next year with everyone that they put in, now maybe they might bring up, maybe twenty-five. You know, I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I don't want to be quoted on that. But, but no, they're, they're doing the same thing. So they're not on a school choice campaign, but I, I think it's reflective of their student based population, their overall population in the community is comparable to what you can build in Berlin.
It's just the decisions that we do make are something Tohoto will have to live with.
Right. That's something that I, I think, over the years, I've always hoped that superintendent could do it all, you know, all encompassing, the school choice slots. I mean, as far as looking at Berlin and Boylston, make, you know, I know a lot of changes happened in the kindergarten, but eventually they all are going to go to Tohoto where you want a certain size class, too. And, I mean, even Carol talking to the principal of Boylston Elementary, when you make your decisions about school choice slots to request, I think that talking about it together is a good idea.
And as you know, we're not even post-affiling our school's choice slots in Tohoto. We change them all the year.
Right.
Because we still have slots to go.
Are you okay? We're in the building.
Good?
One of my concerns is.
Hope so.
I always loved having a small classroom, and I know there are the social issues that go along with that, but really, a lot of that one-on-one attention, that small-town family, I think there's a lot to be said for that. And I think that's why a lot of people really love our school system, we're so dedicated to it. But it seems like there's a bigger conversation, there's a question, I think, that you're looking for us to answer, but in my opinion, this is a bigger conversation, and I'd like to hear from more parents and people in town, how do they feel? Would they rather see more kids coming in, us opening up more slots? Are they happy with the, the smaller classrooms? I think that's something we'd like to hear from our people.
They said to some of the, selectmen in the other towns, having they were concerned about some of the school choice slots, I guess my final parting break as well, show me the dough.
That's right.
If you want to run these kind of comprehensive programs.
Right.
That's your running. And you, and you have these unfilled mandates, financially unfilled mandates that we're operating under, I mean, ELL mandate coming out, and the superintendent told the commissioner two weeks ago, and I'm meeting with him, I did a meeting with him, and I was there, saying, you need to, this community is like ours, and Joe Sawyer was there from Shrewsbury, did a great job explaining it from Shrewsbury, you know. What do we have in the district? Two, only kids, we have ELL. Eddie?
In ours, one potential.
One potential. What we're, what we're required to do with this new paperwork coming out, and the people we have to have trained, the designation we have to have is just absolutely unbelievable, you know, for this school system, and I include that in Boylston and Tohoto. You know, I understand why they're doing it, but it, so we just, just give us a window.
Right.
So for this evening's discussion.
So Carol, just the specific proposal is, is to drop the four slots of grade five and put them in the K.
And shift them to K.
Four slots?
The four slots that are, are open in. Well, that, the one, the one is already was voted on, that was a sibling of a student that's already at BMS. So one was already placed there. When we voted the last one.
I guess no more. Are you looking to put five slots into kindergarten, one from second and fourth and fifth, or just the fourth and the fifth?
The others we voted on. No, she's asking the, the one slot's still open in the second grade, you want to leave that alone? Yes, I'd leave that one alone. Okay. So I'd leave that slot alone. It's just the four slots that are open in fifth grade, for fifth grade, I would like to shift those over to kindergarten. We have, and we have no, nobody who's applied for the fifth grade slot this time. The only thing I foresee is that if these are oldest children, some of the nine that happen to be chosen to become the school choice, that there will be, I mean, next year's obviously not an issue, enrollment stays down as low as fifteen, but there generally are siblings. So in future years, I mean, that's why I think it's a good idea to compromise with four rather than nine, because I think then you're going to be talking about siblings in a couple of years of that student, and you don't like to split up families, and I know we don't have to accept a sibling, I mean, so, but it is nice to keep the families together, otherwise you may lose the one in the upper grade if they decide to go elsewhere.
But you're not asking for nine, you're only asking for four.
No, I was, but I, I've given up that fight.
Okay, thank you.
I kept, kept trying.
Competations.
Week after week, I'd say to my, but I want nine, you know. Right. So this is sort of like a compromise, not, well.
No, I didn't say no, I said I projected the reaction, the committee would be no.
Competations. So, and actually, we're not even changing the number of slots, we're adding, and we've already voted on this number of slots, so we're just moving.
But would you need to move any aides or have increased aides in kindergarten grade? Is this?
No.
No, no change in staff.
So how many, are there aides in the kindergarten now? There are two kindergarten teachers.
Right, two full-time kindergarten teachers and two full-time aides. Okay. Carol, did you have a question?
I was just curious, Carol, and you've probably said this before, but how do you decide the four or the nine?
It's a lot, it goes to a lottery.
It goes to a lottery, it's not by application.
Now, we did talk about that last time.
Yeah, there's a lot of misconceptions about that, you know, they keep coming up from time to time, not just in Berlin, but all over the place, regarding school of choice. And when you get into more applicants and you have slots for, it's random draw, and unless it's a sibling ball, and that's, that's differently. And there's absolutely no preference for employees of the town in any capacity whatsoever. You can't put any preferences on any of that, that always comes up, it's like, well, I get that every year from, I'm going to begin today, from someone else, you know, it felt that was a preference, but that, and there isn't. It's all discriminatory, you can't do that. Ideally, the way, the way it is, is you have a student, master roster, the student, you say, okay, Carol Bradley's number one, okay, Corey's number two, Mike DePaul's number three, take them, put three clips on paper, put them in a hat, in front of witnesses, draw them out, and then do your own slots. We use a table random numbers about to get the answer.
And they're very strict about it. I had to do the lottery over at the preschool, and, gosh, they made a mistake, and they almost made me drive back to Tohoto to do it over. So they're very strict, and they're very good about it.
Well, it should be, it's fairness.
Yep. Okay, so, do my hero motion?
I won't, we adjust the four slots in fifth grade to school choice to kindergarten.
I'll second that. So we're not changing the school slots, the number of them.
Probably to pay pause, so to speak.
Right.
Probably a bad analogy.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. This way they can know, for the puppet show for the kindergarten, early, early June first is actually, so I want to make sure all my folks are able to attend that, get to meet the teachers and their, their lessons. I have to say, I've seen the notices, the weekly notices, I helped the notice on it, and I was, you know, when it was, and I'm glad you elaborated on it, I'm thinking, what are they writing notes to each other? I. Now it makes sense. So when is the puppet? Puppet show? June first, for incoming kindergarten families. That's nice. Yeah, and then they have these, the presenting the gardener, the hostess and hostesses, and they greet them, and watch the show with them, show them their kindergarten class. So if I can get this, the lottery done, the draw done, then they can be part of that experience. Well, I have to say, the preschool, when I helped the preschool lottery, it was, it was so, they're so cute, they're so cute, and. All right. I think we've covered the business items. And public school committee comments? Public? Um, I did want to, I know Angela's here, who hopes to win the election on Monday, Monday night. All right, Nikki?
Yes, yes.
Be careful, it's like the firm, you can't leave.
Sure you can.
No, no, apparently you can.
And I didn't know whether we needed to talk about meeting dates with Angela's. She, I talked to her this afternoon, and she did say that Wednesdays are good, but only through till, what, September?
Mid, mid-September, I have a conflict on Wednesday nights.
Oh, joy. Glad I won't be here.
You can't leave either, what are you doing?
But, but speaking with Ruth earlier, too, it's ideal to have consistent dates, so I guess I was just wondering if, um, you know, you can start in the next school year, whenever they wanna, but like I said, Thursday, for example, I think here is a good day for postings.
Turning my head.
Something to care.
I mean, I don't know how Thursday works.
It's okay with me.
Right, Thursday's just fine with me, too, so.
We just try to avoid having two school of any meetings in one week, if we can, just a workload for the offices, just, it's pretty naggy times, so.
I mean, I, I don't know whether we, we could probably put that on the June agenda to actually talk about it, or we could, um
My, my suggestion would be, uh, that when you come on board, is maybe they have that conversation, set those region meetings first, they tend to be the most complicated ones to set, and then I think the elements tend to be a little bit easier. And, I mean, you've got, you've got plenty of time to do it, too.
Okay. Um, but next month, it'll be a Wednesday, and that's okay? That'll work, okay. And we just definitely will figure that out, the next meeting if we can, or the, or the region meeting.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good place to take it up.
Right. Okay. Uh, just a quick update, I did go to the FAC meeting this Tuesday, Dennis Fairbay has been voted as the new chair for FAC after many, many years, Richard being the chair, he said, that's it, I'm done.
Really?
Can I have his chair?
You can have his actual chair. But Dennis got his chair.
Have to take the reservation off his seat.
Um, just to let, you know, just to let the committee know, and I did mention that there is a town officers' meeting on May twenty-fourth to talk about Highland Commons litigation. So, if, um, seven o'clock. So if, um, at that point, it would be Angela and Ruth, you're probably welcome to stick your head in, you can.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the date?
The twenty-fourth, it'll be, yeah, May twenty-fourth, there's a lot of things going on, May twenty-fourth, you said the, um, memorial day program, too. And Nadine will be in the vicinity that day, too. Okay. Um, I think that was about it, we just sort of, um, rehashed the town meeting, um, and I, I think maybe it might be to Nadine's advantage, you would probably agree, that we maybe have a discussion with the town moderator or something, to make sure that, you know, Berlin does its school business at the beginning of the
That would be nice, I mean, if, either, either or.
Right.
Boylston historically has put their, the vote town vote at the last article of the, of the evening, and, uh, that would be helpful, you know. And if you think of the beginning of the night, where you have something that, that's gonna be complicated, you know, it's gonna require a lot of time, like, you need to
Yeah, that always split up, puts you guys up.
Yeah, but like I was saying, you know, you know
Sometimes I can speak to things, uh, and sometimes
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, really, it's good to have
Think if it's money, you know, if money matters, you know, it's good to be together, things like that.
I, I did try to address this with selectmen a few years ago, when there were some different selectmen, and, um, really, they, neither town wanted to budge. We happened to have a meeting, um, at Tohato with both towns' selectmen representation, and, but they said they'd just sort of work it out that evening, as far as trying to put one town's things first and one town's things second. We haven't had the conversation again since then, so.
Well, that's something I think we could remind the town fathers, so to speak, you know, at the beginning of the year, in cases of special town meetings, and I can sort of put that on my agenda for, to discuss with Nadine, just to say, you know, remind them, let's, let's, you know, to have those. You know, they just don't know how fast town meeting's gonna go.
Right.
You know, because, uh, Boylston bundles more articles at the beginning than you do, and when they go with their town vote, they're not splitting that town budget, or you're voting it by sections, they don't. But on the other hand, then, some of the things they do, they do differently than you, that takes a lot, it, it just depends on what you run into, you know.
Right, usually, we're pretty lucky that, you know, one town or the other may have something controversial, but not both. But, you know, it is, it's troublesome for superintendent and business director to try to get
Twelve minutes from here to Tohato.
Twelve minutes. Did you get a police escort?
No, I was looking for him, no.
Looking at my review of BR2, saying, oh, boy, this'll be the night I'll
We're too worried about the Berlin or Boylston guys, because the stateies could be a tough one to talk your way out of.
Well, and we, and I think the committee did fine here in Berlin, and, um, I, my heart just went through my roof when there was a, a community member who stood up and wanted to ask a question after I made the motion for the roof, but fortunately, it wasn't, it was to do with free cash and not the roof, because I I don't think I could answer questions about the roof, and I know the bind that the Boylston members probably had at
Oh, yeah.
the Boylston town meeting about their roof, so.
They were very happy to see me.
Very lucky that we
Very happy to see you.
Very lucky that, um, you know, we've had, got a supportive group in town meeting, too. That was really it, that was all my comments. Future agenda items? You said handbooks, um
Is your approval plan?
Do it in the fall.
In the fall, okay, okay.
The mission statement was coming in June.
Okay.
Just wanted The scholarship update.
Right, the scholarship update might come even before the June meeting. Right.
Down to this future.
Yep.
And then the meeting dates.
And meeting dates, okay, just get all your handbooks. Yeah. She said, and, you know, let us know if you have handbook things ahead of time, or, you know.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Maybe there's one more thing. The reason why we had to come One more time, Nikki, to thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I tried to vote them, but they insisted.
Don't get them a prize. You're getting nothing.
Thank you so much for your, again, for three years.
Very thoughtful, very sweet.
Mike, Mike really had a lot to do with this, so, should I open it?
If Mike had a lot to do with it, should I really open it now in front of the cameras?
Wait a minute, I thought it was a fishing reel.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you, oh, this is very sweet.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You made it three years.
I'm all red, I don't normally get red. Thank you, yes, well, it was a pleasure to serve with all of you, because you're all just really wonderful people, and so dedicated to the students and the families, and they're all, and it's been a nice pleasure, thank you, and I'm glad to get to know all of you, you too.
Thank you.
He gives it up, he has to.
Well, thank you, and
Thank you.
I think the last thing on the agenda is an executive session, a completely quick one.
Yes.
To discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. So, I would ask for someone to make that motion, to go into executive session for that purpose.
So moved?
Only to open, only to
Only to, um, return to regular session to
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Yep.
My last motion, so moved.
Okay, and a roll call vote. Nikki?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Move?
Aye.
Angela?